All right, we'll start the meeting with a pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your public, to your people, to your nation. All righty, all members are present. Mr. Looney, you have the floor, if you'd like to make comment. If not, we'll move on.
No, I came here purposely. Carl had been talking to me for three years about the police department getting corrected. And nothing's been done. And now the police commission is corrupt too. They hired, or they, Democrats put a slate of five people to correct all the thing and make it transparent. Well, nothing's transparent in the year and a half that they've been there. And it's just getting worse. I talked to you back when Carl Van Gauw was chairman, you remember? Well, I don't know if you people drive around town and have occasion to spot police in action, but it's a joke. I witnessed two major things that I can't believe occurred in Sabre. One was a domestic, they had word of a gun being present. I watched the whole thing play out because they were setting up at the Parkedon diner there. Bringing out their AK-40, uh, 15s or whatever they are. Getting protection on helmets, they had four squad cars, people going up King Street there with AR-15s going to a domestic. Now, I know with guns, the dangers and it's, if you got four wounded, there's one present. But every cop having an AR-15, that's over the welcome to. But they said they had to do it. Well, if you watched it, they didn't do anything to protect anybody coming down King Street from Elm Street. They all started out at the Parkedon diner and walked up the street using a car as a thing. That's one incident. Recently, I was returning home and I decided to go down White Pond. And this was about two or three weeks ago. Every fucking cop we had, vans, cars.
Mr. Looney, it's a public, public meeting, it's being recorded. Watch your language, please. That's, if you don't mind.
I'm just saying, it's so frustrating. Eight cars, the chief, the captain, and every police officer we had. Which started, the incident, from what I understand, started out for a motor vehicle violation. And when they passed me, I had to see what was going on. So I went down Whitewood Pond there or whatever. And they were on people's lawn. They, they proceeded to chase somebody on their lawn. That happened to be Commissioner Shippey's house. But they drove the vehicle, police vehicles into her backyard. For a motor vehicle incident that her nephew was supposedly involved in. I don't know what took place. But you need eight cars, the chief walking White Pond Road so you can't get that. I had to back up. But that was an overkill if I've ever seen one. There was no reason to proceed a motor vehicle driving into their property, walking off the street. That's just two recent things that I've witnessed. But the main thing, the police commission has done nothing, you can report back to your, nothing. It took them how long to get one revision changed? They haven't accomplished anything. And now, from what I hear, they're gonna put Post as their directive for organization instead of Kalia. That's because the chief wants it. Post is nothing but what trained these cops in the first place. And if you review the hirees that we had for the last three years, there was probably three or four fuckups they, they got rid of.
Mr. Looney, that's the second time. Please stop talking this way in public. This is a public meeting.
Yeah. Why don't you just turn the thing off? Because nothing's gonna happen anyway. I'm trying to tell you, if you can't think of anything that this town needs is to have Kalia go get in there and run and direct the police commission, which they, none of them understand. Well, probably one, none of them understand how a police department is supposed to be run. The chief is directing everything. It's like he's holding information or blackmailing everybody on the, on the thing. Do you understand how important it is to have a police department that functions properly? And what about hiring properly? The chief picks him before he sends him to the police commission for review. It should be the other way around. And you can't go one at a time because you're not getting the best of the job. And how long, how many, well, three years ago, the chief micro-manages to the point, a police chief does not go out to motor vehicle accidents unless there's a death. He goes to every little thing. There's no need for it. There is no need for a way this department is run. But if you allow them to pick Post, which that's the same people that trained the police. They didn't, they didn't get, uh, what you call, check these people out thoroughly. I don't know how they got through the academy. I really don't. And a guy playing on his computer. What was the, a few other things they did?
All right, bigger, okay.
Do you understand how important it is? And if you guys are the last resort to get Kalia as our director of housing, because it's gonna come down, the state's mandated, but they're gonna go the easy way. And White Wilcox is favoring Post now after he had his little meetings with the chief, is loaded Chris. It's up to you guys to save this town, to get a police department that's functioning properly, finally. We've had 12 years of not even having the chief have a goddamn review. No, no business gets raises without having the process of a review. And I don't understand why this goes on. You have to do something. Both, all three of you, well, are you gonna help this time? Because you're supposed to speak out when these people don't do their job. That's the reason why we have a third party involved. What?
There's two parts.
Yeah, but.
I, I understand what you're saying. All right.
Do you understand?
I do, yes.
You haven't for three years.
Okay, maybe I, maybe I don't, but you, you, anything else you wanna say?
Yeah.
Please, because we usually limit it to a certain amount of time. So I understand that. That's why I'm giving you some leeway here.
The other thing is, this meeting, if you look on television and all over boards and town meetings, they have a proper speaking system and a microphone in front of every person there. This system here doesn't work because when it goes back to the replay, you hardly hear.
Okay, I'm gonna make a note of that, that you're not the first, you're the second person to say that. So I'm gonna make a note of that and I'll bring it to Larry in IT, okay?
And the other thing is, why does he have to be in here for everything?
He doesn't have to be. He's not here every time.
For the police commission, he is. Even on executive session, he sits in.
He, no, he doesn't sit in on.
Yes, he does.
He does not. He does not. He starts the executive session, he stops the recording, and then it, then it starts recording again. So he does not sit in on executive session. I can assure you that. All right. Anything else? I know you're, had a lot to say.
Well, my question is.
No, this is public comment. We're not, it's not a dialogue.
Well, that's another thing that screwed up.
Okay.
Do you understand? You have to do something? That's all I wanna know. Do you understand? Are you running again, by the way?
We, we declared yes. So that's not.
You declared too?
We, we filed paperwork. So that's not for today's meeting. So.
It, it's, it might not be, but so what have we accomplished? Friday night lights? We even have it on the police department.
Very crowded Friday.
All right, all right, Mike, I understand. All right, thank you.
Thank you for the support.
Thanks, your comment.
These people aren't gonna do anything.
Right.
They better get out to the town. Why isn't there a newspaper person checking on your meetings anymore?
They do.
Where?
You know what? They look at the recordings.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Better exit of these words.
All right, they do. They look at the recording.
Well, important, because I'll tell you, I'm gonna make it difficult. I'm gonna make it, you people, if you're running again and you haven't accomplished anything along with the police commission, this town's gonna hear about it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So, um, you know, the, the whole Post versus Kalia thing, I think, I, I don't know what you know about that, but originally the, uh, what did they call it? Police officer modification law that they, yeah.
Training.
That they last, that they passed last year in the legislature, the accountability act, uh, did say Kalia, but there's a hundred, there's about a hundred police departments in the state. And there's, I don't know how many Kalia, maybe 15 to 20. It's very, it's a very expensive process. Lately process, and they had put like 2025 on it. And the other 80 departments were like, we can't get done. And so they said, look, as long as you're Post accredited, that's fine. So they did relax that standard. Yeah. So he's right about that. They did relax that standard.
But that, at the state level, at the state law level, not, not.
They originally said Kalia, but it was impossible.
Special session and then they changed it.
That it was gonna happen. So.
And just to clarify, do we have any role in making a decision as to whether or not we are using Kalia?
Absolutely not. Not, absolutely not. Absolutely not. Um, I mean, we can certainly make a recommendation that they try to achieve that. But I mean, the police, I'm sorry, but I would think if the police commission wanted it, we'd know about it. I mean, there'd be some discussion about it. You know, if they wanted Kalia over Post, I'm not gonna wade into that personally. I mean, I assume they.
Discussing involved is a topic that has been discussed by that commission.
Sure, it's been discussed.
Many years, I heard about Kalia for, I'm gonna say six years.
And I would think with the change in the commission makeup, if there was a difference of opinion, they would insist on it. I, I don't know. But I mean, we could ask the chairman about it, I suppose, and see what he has to say. Mike, yeah, anyway, I'm not gonna, I'm disappointed that he thought he can come in here and just let it rip with language, but I'm gonna talk to Larry about the microphone thing. Somebody else mentioned that, and I'm trying to figure out who it was. He's not the first.
I, when I was participating in the ARBA meeting last week or listening to the recording, I had trouble hearing people that were in the room. I had no trouble hearing the people that were attending them. So.
Okay, all right. Um, all right. Okay, okay, okay. All right. So, um, let's move on. It's not gonna be a particularly lengthy meeting, obviously. Comments, uh, should say, oh, it says, I don't know why it's like that. That's funny that she did this agenda. I'll go. Um, what, uh, went to a CCM legislative commission meeting last week. And, you know, they're talking about all the legislation that is still alive and monitoring it. The firefighter cancer presumption and workers comp is still alive, but there's a meeting with Speaker Ritter coming up. Hopefully come to a compromise on that with firefighters, hopeful. And a few other things going on. One thing I brought up is this whole science of reading thing that we're hearing about from the schools. And that was a big topic of discussion at Board of Finance. So I brought that up and it was kind of interesting because there were probably 50 mayors in first selection there and of course the CCM staff. And Brian O'Connor responded and he said, yeah, it's been out there for a few years. And then John Salmon from Norwalk said, yeah, you know, I heard about it for the first time. And, you know, Norwalk or Norwich rather, Norwich, John. And he said, my superintendent's telling me it's gonna cost me three and a half million dollars. So it's a different district. Um, and then Paula DeFrancesco from Bethany said the same thing. She said her superintendent just kinda, she felt like it was sprung out of her and blah, blah, blah. And, and Mary Calorio from Dan, uh, Danielson said, I've never heard about it. She goes, now I'm gonna have to go back to my Board of Ed and talk to them about this.
Both of my, my wife and my daughter are both readings specialists.
Yeah.
And so the science of reading is like many other things in this world, is it's a piece of, of all that's good, but it's not a be all end all. Nothing ever is. And, and you know, so they, they, there's sort of contradiction between what they call whole language and phonics. And, and they're all pieces that are important to the whole reading puzzle. And none of them are ever going to exist in and on their own. And, and so it's, it's, it's very controversial.
Um, so apparently it's K23, which, you know, the outcomes for K23, of course, if you teach someone to read or not read during those formative years. You know, I guess that has a huge outcome. Um, and that is the theory behind, I guess, pushing it is to say, we need to make sure that these kids can read at that young age. Otherwise, it sets them up for failure later on. That's what I understand to be a little bit of theory behind it. But, um, they're gonna look into it a little bit more and, uh, you know, they, CCM knew about it, but what was a little bit surprising to me was the reaction I got from other mayors in first selection in the room. Some who knew about it, some who recently learned about it, and everybody expressed shock at the cost. So at the last Board of Finance meeting when they voted on the budget, obviously I brought that up. I know Jan has somebody in there for training. Uh, and then of course, the, I don't know.
I was online.
Yeah. The, was, she estimated maybe 250 to 350 for the materials next year, if that were to be the case. There's ways to manage it, obviously. I mean, you, you're going to have a yearly expense, but if there's a large capital investment, we can use an off-budget fund and doesn't impact the budget as much. So that, that's kind of the hope for that. Um, we'll see how it goes. But I'm just bringing it up because it was interesting to see the reaction at the meeting.
At our Board of Finance meeting or?
No, at CCM meeting.
I mean, so we're having that dialogue now, which is good because if, as things continue to go, the Board of Finance is now very well aware of.
They're, they're aware of it. Um, so my understanding also is the legislature is still working on this in terms of whether they're going to delay it or implement it or force it for next year, you know, things like that. I don't know. Um, anyway, everything's status quo. I'm just reporting on that. Uh, that it was discussed at the CCM meeting. They said they'd look into it a little, little, little. I don't know if any of you guys saw Blumenthal broke his femur.
I know.
So at the Yukon basketball parade, it was crazy. I mean, he's a, he's a small guy, as we all know. And there was a recorder, a photographer who was filming or taking pictures and Blumenthal's walking. And this guy is walking back, like walking towards him, but photographing and then stepped like on his foot and they both fell. And he continued walking. And now I, now knowing that he, um, broke his femur and I watched him continue to walk, I was like, oh man. So he had surgery, he had pins and everything.
And, and the fever is, that's, that's the big one, right? That's the biggest, that's like a big deal.
Um, yeah, I just, I saw that and I thought I'd mention it. I actually saw the, I saw the senator last week. I'm gonna actually send him a note. Happy to say that the board sends our best wishes.
I'm happy to be.
Matt, I'll see you at a lot of, today on Mayor's Way RFP. Um, so, uh, one other thing, um, we invested in recently was, um, we're putting dual-facing cameras in, um, 12 vehicles in town. Fire marshal, the building official, and 10 DPW trucks.
So that they're on the driver and the road?
No sound in the cab. And there's a privacy cap if they're taking a break. Okay. But the whole point of this is to be, and I saw this at the KERMA annual meeting. It's be very proactive in terms of your safety. Um, so, um, it supposedly cuts down a lot, uh, texting while driving, um, rolling through stop signs, rolling, now they're turned off during winter storms. Nobody's gonna get on them at 2:00 in the morning when it's a foot of snow an hour. Okay. And I made that very clear. We met with the union. Um, the union did not dispute our right to put them in. The union was saying, we wanna know what the impact on our members are, but that doesn't prevent us from installing them. Um, so they're being installed, not only, they have GPS, obviously. So if someone were to, uh, get sick and end up somewhere, even, even while plowing, obviously. Um, it's a safety reason, hey, why is that truck sitting there on the side of the road for the last 30 minutes? And, um, you have a camera inside the cab so you'd be able to pick it up. So just bringing that up. Um, we're starting to, uh, put them in. And actually, you could, there's a dashboard you can go on and you can see trucks moving through your town and everything. And, um, I saw a demonstration, I sat in on a demo. And not only are they good for our safety, but they're good for, uh, if someone says, hey, I saw a DPW truck speeding going 50 miles an hour down my street. Okay, what time was it? I can go back and check it out. If it's not true, we know it's not true. It could be someone saying it, it could be true, in which case we talk to the driver. Uh, not being used for disciplinary reasons in the first year, we made that clear. This is not a discipline tool. This is a proactive safety tool. One of the cool things that it was used for in another town, um, they were on a street, there was an accident in front of them. And that was the only video footage of it. And it helped the police, um, come to a resolution on that.
How long does the video get recorded and held for?
As long as you want it to. It is the simplest, this is a DAS, it's on the DAS, uh, big website.
Okay.
So DAS certified, um, several towns in Connecticut have it. You literally, and I'm gonna get to your question, you literally click it in. It's easiest to install ever.
Yeah.
And the way they've described it to us is if you wanna go back six months, we have it. We have it. I said, for how long? They pretty much were going to do that. We have these massive servers all over. And there is no limit on storage right now. So, I mean, I suppose we could say erase them after two years, one year or whatever. But no one's, no one, that didn't come up. But it's actually nice to be able to have. Um, obviously we can let the police department know we have it and see if we have any video that might help them ever. Um, but, uh, the data on this is pretty convincing nationwide where it's been installed. They're seeing significantly less incidents with, uh, public infrastructure, which is, uh, one of the things that I'm always super concerned about. So that truck that takes the municipal solid waste up to Essex is a heavy truck, you know, uh, and I wanna make sure that truck is being operated appropriately. Um, at this point, we did not pay for diagnostics. Um, you can plug it in and you can get all the diagnostics on the vehicle. Don't have that right now, um, but that might be something we implement at a later date. So just letting you know, it's a pretty inexpensive solution. It's like 500 a truck for the year.
For the year.
I mean, I was like, so.
So it's something that we can, we're working into our current operating budget and it's.
Yes.
Working to the next.
No problem. Won't be an issue. Might have that little bit of money next year, very low.
Uh, can I, just another question. So you said you talked to the union about it and there's no disciplinary, it's not being used for disciplinary action for the first year. Did, is there a, do we have to go back for negotiation if we want that to be something going forward?
No, um, look, I mean, if someone is constantly speeding, I have the right to basically say, stop speeding in, in our public trucks.
Yeah.
It's dangerous. I don't, I, that's not an issue. I, I don't see that as an issue in town at all. I don't ever, and I'm, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I never see a truck, uh, one of our guys speeding. I really don't. Um, but it could be ultimately used for that. Right now, it's in there. Let everybody get used to it. Let's see what information we get over the next year. To me, it's really neat stuff. And Bill Clathy was like, I love it. He's like, I love it. Uh, so it'd help with some efficiency of routes too. Um, you know, routing, uh, you know, if you see a truck doing this and this and this, you know, could say, hey, you know what? You're all over the place. You're putting too many miles on the vehicle. Go through too much diesel and that thing and stuff.
It's gonna help someone almost like a man to the standpoint, shouldn't anybody will delve into it?
Um, and lastly, um, so when we were early, after the first wave of the pandemic, so let's say, let's call it March of 21, um, we were talking about having a big reopening party kind of in town. And then the second wave, you know, it, it kinda, I think I'm Omicron.
Yeah.
Um, so that became Omicron. So, um, it's come up again. Have, have you heard about this? I mentioned it?
I have, it's been leaking out for years. I've been asked about it and I said, well, I kinda remember, but I'm not sure. I haven't, you know, I'm not, I think I would know about it.
But June 25th is the, we've selected at this point, Sunday. And, um, we are likely to launch this. So the committee so far has been Jennifer, uh, myself, Brett Elliott, because I think it's important to advocate Judy and the chief, obviously. The concept is to close Main Street, all four lanes, from Sheffield to Elm. Um, invite as many restaurants as we can get from anywhere. Chamber, non-chamber, Westbrook, anywhere you wanna come from. And the, the restaurants in theory and the vendors would be on the median facing towards the stores. So you're not blocking any retail. So you get food, you got retail in front of you. Um, we did it on a Sunday because we're like, the restaurants aren't gonna participate on a Saturday. They're too busy, hopefully. And on a Sunday, we were talking about one to six. People don't wanna be out too late on a Sunday typically. Getting bands, Brett's gonna work, look at some bands to get. The idea is to have a band up by home, a band Sheffield, and a band in the middle. Something like that. It could be food vendors, it could be other vendors, um, It could be food vendors, it could be other vendors, um. And uh. It, and it could be tchotchke stuff. Someone said, are you gonna allow a guy who pushes the balloons up the street? And it's like, well, yeah, that's probably a good event for it, actually. And I tech- technically, you can't prohibit people. It's free speech essentially. I mean, you know, you can't stop someone from peddling. So um, it's just a big fair. It's just a big block party.
No, are we charging for tickets?
So um, no. There is a um health license that you have to get through the, through CRAB. Uh, so we're trying to get Scott to lower that from fifty to twenty five bucks. Because we really want participation.
Um, for, for each vendor?
For each vendor, food vendors.
Yeah.
For health reasons, they have to get a license through that.
Yeah.
So we're seeing that Scott will lower it from fifty to twenty five because we wanna encourage participation. We were talking about if he does lower to twenty five, keeping it at fifty so we can offset some costs. But. I'm not so sure I'm in that camp and I think we're gonna have a big sponsor. Um. So I think we have two sponsors right now and uh, that's all we're gonna have because one of them doesn't want anybody else. Um, so I emailed Allwaste and said, hey, we're thinking about doing this. What do we need and how can you help? And. And my contact over at Always keeps saying, who's, who's been unbelievable. Every time I email, he's like, right back. He said, let me work on it, let me look at it. He goes, and by the way, we're donating. I went, oh, wow. I didn't even ask. I mean, literally the email was like, this is what we're thinking about doing. That's the response I got back. The other donor, I've had preliminary conversations with, probably not too hard to figure out who it is, um. But uh, his company and this guy in town just said, if I do something, I wanna be the only person. I wanna be the only company.
Hmm.
Um, so we're gonna put together a preliminary list of costs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, bands, so the bands might be, you know, three or four grand.
Yeah.
Offset that cost. We're not offsetting police personnel costs. We're not doing that. Chief is gonna put it in his budget. He's got that covered. So maybe offsetting, you know, any other costs that we have. Uh. DPW will work double time that day. We'll cover that in the town, you know, that'll be covered. Um, not asking for that to be offset by a sponsor. That's a town cost. So. Any other costs we have, whatever it is, maybe it's advertising and, and so we come out of this and we just make it simple for the vendors. Cheap for the vendors to make money on that day. And just come and hang out on Old Sable. There's no rain date. It's done. Um. So uh, I mean, you know, it, closing all four lanes, it's pretty cool.
And are there, um, I might have missed us, any plans for the green area, you know, that there's.
So not right now.
Gazebo, right there might be a.
Right now, I mean, what we could do is maybe set up some tables here if people wanna eat here. Uh, we are gonna set some tables up at Elm Street so people can listen to a band and eat. Um, that was one of the thoughts, uh, but. It's, it's gonna be in like. So we need people to be able to move, get around, right? Um, so Sheffield Street you can't close, so it's gonna be on the north side of Sheffield Street, the closure. Um. But I don't think it's gonna affect Nora. She's gonna be fine. There'll be more business for her. The Essex doesn't operate on Sundays, but they might wanna participate. Liv's isn't open on Sundays. Maybe he participates. I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But one, we haven't talked to all the uh merchants yet, but. Porta Plaza is probably someone we have to talk to, like the gym, you know, and. They may also, but it should help their business that day, if you would think. Um, there's plenty of parking at St. John. We could use the middle school parking lot. There should be plenty of parking.
Kind of like the same way people get onto Main Street for Memorial Day Parade and.
Yeah, I mean, they, they could park at the uh shopping center and walk over and during, you know, it's not that far a walk. So. Um, just kind of put that on your radar, um. We're gonna have another meeting uh before too long. It's not official. We haven't got any flyers out, but um, it's something we're looking at. Could be fun. Anyway. That's it. I just wanted to mention those things and uh. We can talk about the budget meeting uh very shortly in those states. Anything for me, uh, Matt or Scott?
I know Carlos.
Carl, I just wanna uh to draw attention to the column that you wrote in the Sable events and I mean.
Oh.
A couple, I mean, a couple of pieces from that. I mean, I'm glad I've had more dialogue with people in town, friends. Families that are bringing up about the garbage.
Oh, oh, the garbage.
On the garbage. Um, so I think it's great that there's that additional awareness um that is, you know, just kind of coming up. I'm hearing.
All I write about?
What's that?
It's all I write about.
It's all you write about, it's all we talk about.
Right, for five years.
Garbage is an item, a standing item, I think, on our agenda. Um, but no, I think that it's. It just kind of feedback that there's, there's more conversation about it. I even heard, um.
You're glad.
I heard that uh, the, the kids in the um middle school have been doing projects. And they're thinking about like what to do with waste and even kind of having that dialogue with like how, how is composting working for you at home? And so there's just that kind of intergenerational awareness that I'm hearing more.
Food waste, we need to food waste is, has to be focused.
I think we, I think the Chambers use Blue Earth compost in the past for the chili festival.
Okay.
And I don't know, like, we're thinking about that re, the reopening party on the twenty fifth, if we're thinking about food waste.
Good idea, you know, that's a good idea. I'll contact Blue Earth.
I'm here for it.
What?
And then, no, I also just wanted to, um, I appreciated your comments about the murals. Um, you know, and I've, you know, seen great, you know, I've seen comments from kind of both perspectives, but you know, I, I. Do appreciate that we're, we're looking at being a diverse community that's embracing of all the people that live here and all the people that wanna live here. And I just felt that it was, it was well said.
I felt like it needed to be addressed.
I, yeah.
Because, so. I have one, well, I have several people in town who have my ear, who are like, it's outrageous that those are allowed. And um, I tell them the reasons. Um, on the other hand, I have. I had a lady after my column printed or published, email me and said, I for one, welcome. And I'm glad we have them and I'm glad we're not just. You know, we're, we're looking at diversity in, you know, recognizing diversity in our community. That we have a diverse population. Angus McDonald yesterday in Deep River texted me and he's like, you know, tell me about the murals in your town. I'd like to get some here. And I said, private organizations, private property. Um, go in and ask the store owners who did theirs and make them touch base with you. So. You know, it, it, I think it needed to be addressed uh because it's a topic. And one person said, we're gonna look like Delhi India before you know it. Okay? What to say about that?
Um, another thing that I just wanted to kind of approach and maybe it's an, it's an agenda item for a future meeting, you know, and it kind of goes off of. I think what we were talking about at the ARPA committee meeting last time around end of year surplus. And some of the parking rec activities that we might be able to do. And I'm just. Wondering how soon we can kind of, I don't wanna count our chickens before they hatch, but if we look at some of these activities that are gonna be used during the spring and summer. By people that are enjoying the town, are there some of these things that we can start to say? Yeah, we're gonna green light this, go forward and get the bids so that we can get this going and then. Give you the money and, you know, on June thirtieth or July first, however that works, just to instead of waiting till next.
So the answer is, uh, I would say yes to that, um. There's. You know, Elm Street, the funny thing, that Elm Street Park, uh, Maple Street Park, Pocket Park.
Yeah.
Irrigation has been discussed for years in there and been resisted for years by Board Finance. Resisted for years. Um. And it looks like it has a little bit more um uh momentum this year finally to get done. So something like that is a project that should probably be bid now and um. What did I, I'll, I'll mention that to Ray and see if he, you know. And the bits, you know, bottom line is the bits don't have to be that complicated for these. Forty thousand dollar projects, you know, it's like looking for irrigation.
Yeah, well, I, I would need irrigation at my house too.
Yeah, well, we can't do that, we can't, me in general, um. Let me just make a note of that. So.
All right.
Um. You know, just quickly on Park and Rec, uh. They have a lot of projects in the named part in the capital, coming out of the Capital Now Recurring Fund this year, which is awesome.
Right.
I mean, I am, I'm sorry, but I'm such a believer, not only from what we've heard at ARPA meetings. But the fact is, and you were on the rep, you were on the commission. Invest in, you invest in your parks and it's gonna bring people to town. Older, younger, everybody.
And I went to that.
It's a little greater.
The park. They just, the, in town park, the frisbee golf.
Yeah, oh, I haven't done it.
So yesterday I went walk, cause I had somebody indicated to me they didn't like. Some of the stuff that's there right now, because while they're in this construction mode, there's a, a environmental friendly bathroom back there. You know, and it, it, it's a structure that they constructed back there, but behind it is, are some black. Rolls of tarp paper, you know, so it's not gonna be forever. It's a short term thing, but I walked that. Disc golf where a little bit and, and the thing is, that is a major course. If you're a disc golf player, you're coming from anywhere.
Is that right?
Looking course.
Is it, is that done yet?
No, it's, it's still in, in the works.
Okay, was winter stopped them a little bit? It needs warmer weather apparently? Because.
He told me it'd be done.
Working on it for six months.
My, you know, I spoke with Johnny yesterday. He said somewhere like, first we can do many things, it'll be done.
Okay. Okay. Um, um, so look. I'm, I'm happy to put some, I mean, I, I think the project should be funded.
Yeah.
Period.
I agree. I, I agree.
Yeah, let's, let's move some of these projects. Let's start, let's break around on Clark Park and start. Looking at that vision. That they have for, in the strategic plan.
Yeah, since we're talking about the budget, I made comments that back when we passed the budget. Um, that we would start to have joint meetings with Park and Rec so we could start to come up with a strategy. You know, long term, so once we, you know, as we're getting beyond the budget period, if we could start to get those scheduled, because I know budget is cyclical, right?
You wanna have like Ray and uh Sue in?
I think you have Ray and Sue in, so we can start to talk about how we wanna. Look at a strategy for these big capital investments, so it's not just what we have in the, the surplus.
Right. Always money, guys, we can uh find a, find something to do with, like, you guys heard me. One thing I mentioned at the Board of Finance last week is I have. An endless amount of engineering projects that I don't even know what to do. But I won't get into that now. Um, all right. Uh, minutes from March twenty eighth. Motion?
I'm making a motion that we accept those.
I'll second that.
Any comments on those? Hearing none, all those in favor, so by saying hi.
Hi.
Really? Hi Scott, can you read this and hand it to Matt?
Thanks.
Um, so. Let me, I'll make a motion that we uh. Approve the call of the annual town budget meeting.
I will second that.
So, um. May one. This is uh first Monday of May. And uh, what we will have, the referendum, we're checking with Pamela Story over at the schools. The referendum would be on May ninth, right? Yeah, Tuesday, May ninth. Um, looks like the next year would be a late referendum, because if it's May one this year, I assume it's gonna be like May seven and then it'll be like May fifteen, which is. Um, a little different. So uh, anyway, um, yeah, that's the budget. Um. Any comments on the call? Any questions to that? Hearing none, all those in favor, so by saying hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you. It's all signed. I'll give it to George Ann. That'll be in the Harper News. Um, I don't know if you guys have, are aware of the. Case out of Fenwick with regard to notice, uh, uh, publication of a notice provision. So. I'll just make a quick comment on that and then we can adjourn, um. Scott probably has grandparent duties to go to.
Second question.
Tomorrow. Uh, so. Fenwick passed an ordinance with regard to short term rentals. Uh, saying something along the lines of, you can only rent your house out. For no less than two weeks. No more than six times a year, something like, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Not exactly. And they. Their, their zoning commission pub, uh, passed it. And then they, because when you pass an ordinance or a regulation, you have to publish it and then it becomes effective after a certain period of time. They published it in the Middletown Press. And some of the folks who didn't like the ordinance sued. In the Superior Court and said. Publication in the Middletown Press is not adequate notice. Because no one gets the Middletown Press. And they won, and then they won on appeal. Because Fenwick appealed it and they won again. So. Um. The notice thing is kind of an interesting thing now, because I don't, I get the Hartford Current online. But if you were to try to determine how many people physically get the paper in town in, in Old Sable, I don't know what that number is, or the day. And certainly not the register. Um, so it's kind of a little bit of a conundrum. One thing we know about the Harvard News is. Goes every town, every resident and every business. But there's not always time to put it in the Harvard News. So um, you know, sometimes we do use the Middletown Press, sometimes. Um, I don't know if that's adequate or not. Not sure.
So with today's day and age, it seems to me that.
I'm not.
Your town website should serve as, as that.
Well, money, you should bring that up because that is legislation that is going through right now.
I just thought something yesterday that on the work zone, the new, the work zone rules know the zone there. So they're, they, they just put cameras on. Public works vehicles that, so. All those traffic zones on the highway. And this is the, the State Department of whatever they do.
They're, they're, I read it this morning.
Okay, and so those guys, on their website, they're announcing everywhere those, those people are gonna be so that if you drive, because they said the first fine is a warning.
Yeah.
The second one is seventy five and a hundred and fifty for everyone after that. And they, so I thought, found that interesting that they're, they're able to say, hey, look, we put this on the news, we put it on, we're even telling you where the cameras are actually stationed. So you're being as proactive as you can, but the information is there if you wanna see.
So the fact is that, um. We, I don't, I can ask Larry how many push notifications we send out, but it's significant. And it's far more than anybody who's reading the newspaper in town. Now, when we advert, when we bid something. I think putting it on our website and putting it on the DAS website, which George Ann does, you can't tell me that that is, that's where all the contractors look.
Yeah.
So. And that doesn't cost us anything. So advertising in the Hartford Current, we spent about thirty five thousand dollars a year advertising last year. The town. That a tremendous amount of money, but if we could reduce that um by twenty thousand. You know, so that legislation is making its way through the session right now. We'll find out. If it's successful, newspapers, obviously, that's a huge revenue point for them, so they're fighting it again. Uh, we will see where it goes. And Norm Needleton, by the way, I understand, is not in favor of the legislation. That's what I understand and. Whatever way, Norm's fine. I don't care whatever way he votes.
Just a, just a friendly, we should just do our part to make sure that we have dates and times of meetings noticed on our website accurately. Cause we've just had a couple of.
I know.
A couple of mess ups um recently in terms of location or time being right. Um, so I just. You know, I don't think that, I don't think it's, you know, it, it happens, but I think that. That is the key place, as we're all saying, that everybody puts information, we should just make sure we're doing our part.
I heard about that and I'm like, oh, these people are looking, right?
Yeah.
All right, I take that back. Uh, motion would you adjourn?
Motion.